May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two City of Broussard Council Meeting. Please silence your cell phones and if anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on an item listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue card located in the back of the room and turn it into our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please rise for the pledge. Councilman Garrett, would you lead us in the prayer?
We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, almighty God, to enlighten our minds so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ thy Lord. Amen.
Item two point one, acceptance of the minutes of the May tenth, two thousand twenty-two council meeting. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move.
The minutes were supplied in the council's packet. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question?
District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large, motion carries.
Item three point one, approval of the April two thousand twenty-two financial report. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Our presenter tonight is Karen Fontenot, our CFO. Welcome, Karen.
Good evening, everyone. Your April financials are in your packet. They were also mailed out last week. Quick overview on revenues, the most recent sales tax deposit that we got is the highest that I've seen in probably at least six years. It was thirty-seven percent ahead of budgeted figures. It was over two hundred, it was close to two hundred thousand dollars over what we would need at minimum to collect. It puts us nineteen percent ahead of targeted revenues for sales tax. That's a good two point one million dollars of extra revenue if that figure holds. Last month it was seventeen percent. That brings us right at two million, so this is closer to two point one. On the expenditure side, our departments held their overages. So between the budget amendments that we've done for projects and the overages in our departments, we're flirting with a break even, small profit at this point. So I'm happy with that. Does anyone have any questions about any of the April numbers?
That's certainly good news, Karen. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Any further council discussion?
Question?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point one, Hannah Guillory with Maddie's Footprints. Adopt proclamation celebrating Maddie's footprints for the work and support that they provide in our community. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll move.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Guillory.
Hi, thank you all for having us. I'm gonna keep this very short, but my name is Hannah and I'm here on behalf of Maddie's Footprints. For anyone that is unfamiliar with Maddie's Footprints, we're a nonprofit here in Acadiana. We serve families who are coping with miscarriage, stillbirth, and infant loss financially and emotionally. So Maddie's Footprints, the organization, was founded in two thousand ten by a family, the McGrews, Lori and Travis McGrew, Maddie's parents, in honor of their daughter Madeline, who was born still in two thousand nine. Her birthday is this upcoming week. It's April third, or sorry, June third. And basically, this proclamation is just celebrating the work that has been done in her name. So basically, I just want to say thank you to all of you for everyone who has supported us for so many years. This means everything to not only the McGrew family, but the entire perinatal and infant loss community, just to be recognized and given a voice. So thank you. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about Maddie's Footprints?
I could just add that I know you've had at least two events that I know of at St. Julian Park. We're very proud to support your organization and have you there. And, you know, the city's here to assist you in those events. So if there's something further we can do in the future, please, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you. We so appreciate the support.
Gerald, since we've moved, is there any further public comment?
No public comment.
So since we've moved, do we, does the council vote on accepting the proclamation? Not necessary? Okay, thank you. Item four point two, Mr. Scott Deskins with S E C Development. Request a variance, section twenty-two point two of the zoning ordinance, currently zoned light industrial for a potential car wash and five-minute oil change at two-ten Saint Nazaire Road. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Second.
So I have talked to Mr. Deskins, but Gerald is probably the best person to give an explanation. He, Mr. Deskins is not in town, so the variance request was sent through Gerald.
So, council, Mr. Deskins called and pointed out that they had looked through the zoning ordinance and there's nothing in any of the tables that deal with a car wash and wanted to know what would be necessary to get approval to build a car wash at the property on Saint Nazaire Road. And I went through the zoning ordinance and I have to agree with him, it's not in there. There is no provision for it. So based on some other language within the zoning ordinance, I suggested that he asked the council to approve his project as a variance because there's some language in the ordinance that says if you're not on the list, if your use is not in the table, then it's not approved. Unfortunately, the table doesn't have everything in it. And so I suggested that he would ask for a variance and that's where the request came and now it's before the council for approval.
Gerald, just for clarity's sake, what's being presented is a five-minute oil change and a car wash on this particular lot. The graphic is on screen and is in the council's packet, but that is my understanding of the business.
Right. There's auto services can be, is found within the zoning and it's in the area, but car wash is not. So I think that was a concern and that's what he wanted to address.
Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Open for council discussion?
Mayor, I had a call and I think you did too, from a representative on this project out of Dallas, Texas, and they're very interested in coming to Broussard. Very interested with the growth we're having. He's a very gracious person on the phone and just, there's some ambiguity. As Gerald mentioned, and I think I'm gonna move forward to give him a variance for this project.
I would agree with you. I would just like to make a condition on planning and zoning, reviewing the facade, overall layout, beautification, just to make sure that it's gonna be in line with every other development on that stretch. So I don't know if that's doable.
Well, I think that they're asking for a variance and so the grant can be conditioned in any way that the council determines to be appropriate.
Would Councilman Reagan need a second on that?
I mean, I would imagine that the council would have to determine whether the grant variance, that's conditional or not. Yeah, so I would imagine that
So we have a motion on the floor about
To determine whether or not to impose a condition on the variance, which relates
That is the motion on the floor to grant it with the change that Councilman Reagan suggested, which would include an approval from the zoning and planning board, that the facade and beautification
That's correct.
Would be in line with what's already developed in that area. So do we have a second on Councilman Reagan's change?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm kinda in my own mind and y'all may disagree. I think maybe it should come here rather than planning and zoning, but that's
Okay, do you
Because we don't really have any guidance for planning and zoning. Y'all are the board that makes the rules. Planning and zoning doesn't really make rules. They enforce what we have.
Okay.
So I don't know if that
Understood. You can come back to the council, right?
Right, it can come back. And we can notify the people who sent us something, a drawing, which shows the facade and shows the, you know, what it's gonna look like from the street.
Do you agree, Councilman?
Sure. I mean, I think I speak for all of us. We don't want to deter development or stifle it. We just want to make sure we get it right. I mean, this is one of our key parts of our future development, our future growth. So I just want to make sure we get it right. So, yeah, I'll change my motion to where it comes back to the council for final variance approval.
And I don't, what I don't want is to put the planning commission in a position where I don't have anything, there's no rule. The way we do it now, I look at the rules, I do a report. There's nothing there for me to do that. Y'all can make rules, they can't. That's kind of my thought process.
Good point, Walter.
If I can offer a suggestion, then if we would just table the matter, I'll notify the people that we need to see something, a drawing. We need to see a, you know, a sketch of the facade. And then you'll have that before you when you vote on it finally. Yep.
I think we'd just be looking for a front elevation, see what kind of facade, beautification, landscape. Just make sure it's in line because most of the other development on that stretch has landscape. Even though we don't have an overlay district there, I still think if we do have some leeway in requiring that they do certain things, then now's the time to do it. So.
And we can kind of compare what they propose into what we have on the books in other areas to see if it's kind of consistent with that as far as landscape and facade, et cetera.
But we are saying we're gonna give him conditional approval, correct? So he can move forward with the land purchase? That's what he initially wanted to do, Gerald. Are you gonna push him back some more because of?
Well, I think that he doesn't want to spend a whole lot of money until he knows that the variance is there.
That's my point.
And I can report to him
We need to give him the variance for him to purchase the property. And once he gets the variance, then we can look at the print or the plans to make sure he's in compliance there. Don't you think he would need the variance to move forward?
Well, he's gonna need the variance eventually. If you condition this on what Jesse is suggesting, it's conditioned on the facade meeting whatever requirement y'all have. So he's gotta come in front of you anyway.
Right, but he's not initially asking for that at the point. He wants the variance from one zoning to another zoning, more, Walter?
No, he's not asking to change his zoning district.
He just wants a clarification.
He wants a variance that he can put that type of business in that zoning district. You're saying, yeah, we're good with that, but we want to see what your building looks like. You're making a conditional approval.
Now, I get where you're coming from, Kenny. We want the developer to be able to proceed. Time is money. So we want to give him a conditional approval so he can move forward with rendering those services, spending that money to get us the facade renderings and all that. I mean, it's a four to five million dollar development, so I'm sure it's gonna be up to par. I guess it's just we're setting precedence here. So if we just change it to car wash and they start popping up on every corner and we haven't set some sort of precedence of conditional approval, that's another concern of mine. So I guess either way we skin it, I don't know if we do conditional or we just table it. I get what Walter's saying. Tableting it is kind of the same thing, but we want this man
Keep dangling the carrot, we're pushing the carrot back. That's what we're doing here. So.
It does sound like the council wants to, is making a suggestion that they approve it tonight, conditional that it falls in line with what else is built in that area, which is Walmart, Home Depot, some fast food chains, restaurants. I'm sure they would have no problem with that. You know, everybody knows what these businesses look like, right? So is that, are we getting that right, Councilman? To go ahead and move forward as is, he'll just have to come send us a document to be put in front of council, hopefully the next meeting of the look. Does your second stand based on that?
Yes.
Councilman Garrett?
Yes, sir.
Any further council discussion?
No council discussion.
No public discussion, but does the council have any more?
Oh, I'm sorry, just one last question.
Question?
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Gerald, does that one vote suffice with those changes?
I think based upon how it was presented at the end, I think it does.
Thank you. Item four point three, condemnation report of three oh seven Third Street, Gary McComb property. Mr. Ben Terry was our presenter. Welcome, Ben.
Good evening. So I made a site visit. He has started cleaning up. He got trash cans. He now has water service, which means his water leak has been repaired. His, so his water leak has been repaired. He has a garbage can on site now. He's picked up a bunch of branches. He's still got a little bit of cleaning to do. He has washed a lot of the trailer. To the best of my knowledge, nobody has moved in yet, but he has made significant progress, as you can see from some of the pictures. I passed by today. The shed that was in the back is boarded up, so I don't think anybody can kind of get in it right now at this point.
Are there things on the list you feel like he needs to do to get to the end of this?
I think that the trailer is habitable. The shed probably still needs some more attention. You know, any of that needs to be completely secured or fixed, so we don't have any more vagrants living in it. He's got, like I said, a few trash bags that need to be picked up from stuff he's cleaned, but other than that, as a whole, the trailer itself is in good shape now.
Since our last meeting, I've been watching the property daily. The trash bags have been there since our last meeting. Now, either late yesterday afternoon or today, there's a trailer full of branches. And I just kind of feel like he's waiting, just pushing, being our meeting was till, was today. There has been significant cleanup. I do agree with that. I haven't heard of anybody being in the trailer or gotten any complaints that, you know, they see anyone going in and out. But, I mean, it still has some work to be done.
Yeah, it does have some work to be done and I can push him to complete the garbage pickup.
Because I think there's what, like five or six just trash bags back there?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Oh, it's on. Oh, okay.
But he just got garbage and water middle of last week.
Yeah, if he didn't have a can.
So he didn't have a garbage can.
Ben, could you work with Councilwoman Rockah to develop a numerical list of things that are required to get through this so we can put it to bed one way or another?
Yes, sir.
And present that to Mr. McComb ASAP?
Certainly.
Because the roof as well still has a little pine tree growing off of it. It's still
Correct.
more than halfway covered, I believe, from what I can see.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, we can get together and make a list for him and get it to him so he can complete the
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Not a problem.
Item four point four is condemnation report at two hundred Saint De Porres, Ms. Sharon Norbert's property. Ben?
Correct. So I made a site visit there. As you can see from the pictures, all of the wood has been completely demolished and actually hauled off. I spoke to Ms. Norbert this morning again. She is waiting for her architect to draw some, the plans for what she plans on doing with it. He's made a couple of rough drawings, nothing significant at this time. But he has been in touch with Cooney about getting the plans to him. It's clean. There's no wood, there's no rotten wood left. It's just center blocks, but she knows that she needs to move forward.
Did they give you any kind of timeline, Ben, on when they'd be able to submit plans?
She is trying to reach out to her architect again. She hadn't talked to him in a couple of weeks to get me a timeline. But I'm thinking if he has, if he'd had any plans, it's probably gonna be another month or so before he gets plans to Cooney.
I could possibly suggest that you work with Councilwoman Rockah and be back at our next meeting to give a report on that property.
That would be
Well, I'm speaking of that property, but on this one, the council would maybe make a suggestion on when they'd like to see you back and have a timeline on Saint De Porres.
Perfect.
Plans and her architect, right?
Correct. So.
She's gonna need more. She had two months to clean up. And another month. It's clean. Correct. I've seen a few peoples come by and walk through the place with her.
Well, Mr. Michael, if you'd like Ben to be back with a report in thirty days, we'll make that happen, no matter where we are, and then the council can decide what the next action would be.
I'm getting tired looking at a set of blocks. Need to get something done.
Okay, thirty days we'll come back and I'll get in touch with her and see if we can push to get that architectural drawing done. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ben. Ordinances for introduction, ordinance number two-two-seven-three-one, an ordinance annexing certain properties located in section ten, Township eleven south, range five east, Lafayette Parish, Louisiana, being known as Whispering Meadows Phase Three Annexation. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Gerald Deloney is our presenter on this item. Gerald, do you have any comments?
No, I've reviewed the annexation, the petition, and the certificates of the registrar voters and the assessor. And the matter's primed for a decision by the council at this time.
I can add one or a couple of comments and thoughts to this particular annexation. I was able to meet with some residents that are part of the HOA, but the HOA is still not fully functional, so it was difficult to communicate them with as an HOA. There's some concerns that this is phase three, would put more traffic on the one way in and one way out of this neighborhood, but legally, it's all legal and we discussed that at length. But I think it might, it might make sense as we annex this piece of property to zone it at the same time to make an assurance that it will be single-family residential. I'm making that suggestion to the council. Today, that piece of property is in the parish and unzoned, so it could be developed as anything because we would not have any controls over it. The intent by the owner and the developer is to have it as phase three of this particular neighborhood. So there would be no disagreement there. But if the council sees fit, it would save a step and it would save some time to just annex it and zone it at the same time to be a neighborhood, which is everyone's intent on this piece of property.
So the process would be to amend the ordinance as presented to add that require, that provision, that it would be zoned, single-family residential. And once it's amended, then the council should rule on whether or not to accept introduction of the ordinance.
Understood. So we'd need a council motion and a second to amend it and then a vote there and then a vote to do the entire package if the council chooses to do so.
I'll vote amend and I'll second.
Question?
Question.
Okay. District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion. Motion carries. District five? My order, Michael, I'm sorry.
Tina, I just want to be clear that that vote was done, that was to make the amendment. Is there any public comment on this item before the council votes for final adoption, or for introductory adoption?
No public comment.
Okay. Or council discussion?
Question?
At large? District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item five point two, ordinance number two-two-seven-three-three, an ordinance adopting an amended operating budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Our presenter tonight is Karen Fontenot again. Karen?
So this is the introductory ordinance for our amended budget that ends in June. If you have passed by my desk in the past two weeks, you will see from the files and the papers that we're working on putting it together. I will be meeting with departments next week and then the mayor and I will sit down, kind of get it to a manageable place and then we will start meeting with the council in small groups in preparation for the adoption at the end of June. But this is just the introductory adoption for this ordinance.
Tina, do you have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question? District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? Motion carries.
Item five point three, ordinance number two-two-seven-three-four, an ordinance adopting an operating budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I move. Second.
Karen, again, thank you.
So we have a second introductory ordinance because even though we adopt them as one document, legally, they are two separate documents. We just consolidate them into one. That's why we have two ordinances, but same reason as the first.
Tina, do you have public comments?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five point four, ordinance number two-two-seven-three-five, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to add maps G-nine and G-ten for portions of Saint Nazaire Road, including seven-one-one as well as portions of the one thousand block from light industrial to neighborhood commercial. Before we call for the vote, I'd like to recommend to the council that we table this item based on the following. I was able to speak to a representative of the landowners group today and a few things came out of that discussion. This property currently is zoned as light industrial and they are in agreement that it is the wrong zoning. They would like to take a little more time to decide, to make sure that the zoning that's being suggested is appropriate from them. They expressed a lot of pride in St. Julian Park and they expressed an intent to make sure that what is eventually being built there is supportive of the park. But they would like a little more time for consideration of that, which I think was completely genuine and honest and makes sense to me. So with the council's approval, we could table this item and move it back at a meeting before it's presented for final vote and make sure all parties are being represented before we take it up as a vote.
I'll move to table.
A second. No public comments.
Is there any council discussion?
Question?
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Item five point five, ordinance number two, two dash seven, three, six, an ordinance establishing standards for small wireless facilities in the right of way of the city of Bruce, Art. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Second.
So this item, I would refer to Gerald on, uh, this is an item that Gerald's been working a contract with, um, to make sure that we put an ordinance in front of the council that is encompassing of all companies that will wanna come here with this, this technology. Uh, it is a, a, a improvement of technology, five G service within our city. But it's, it's taken a, a little bit of effort for Gerald to get us there.
So we started off dealing with AT&T for a contract for them to install small wireless facilities. Uh, I, I had, I, uh, kinda moved this in the direction or tried to move it in the direction of dealing, of establishing an ordinance, uh, that would be applicable to all providers, uh, that wish to install small wireless facilities in city of Bruce, Art. Uh, there are federal regulations which deal with this and essentially, you have two requirements and one is that, uh, your restrictions are reasonable because, uh, uh, on, on a national level, it's been determined that uh, this is technology that needs to be promoted, uh, and there should not be restrictions which turn to prohibit, which resulted in prohibition of this technology being deployed. The second requirement is that you're non-discriminatory, meaning that you have a set of rules that's gonna apply evenly to all providers that wish to, uh, install these facilities. So we worked on this ordinance. I, I had input from the people at AT&T, which I appreciate. Uh, we didn't, you know, and eventually, uh, that was going on even up today. So the ordinance, the original one that was in your packet has been changed or tweaked it further. The idea being to give flexibility to the city of Bruce, Art to deal with unknowns. Uh, cause this is, this is a program that you, you will have unknowns down the road. And at, but at the same time complying with federal regulations and with the law as a whole, so. There is a, an alternate form of the ordinance, which, which has about six or seven changes which were made, uh, to the one that was originally in the packet. None of them substantial, but, uh, all designed to give a little bit more flexibility to the city to deal with this.
So Gerald, if I may, I'd like to introduce Mr. LeVar Greenhouse with AT&T. Uh, he was, um, instrumental in working with the city and, and the AT&T group to get us where we are today. He can give us a better understanding about this technology and what it means to adopt this ordinance. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, um, Council Chief Gerald. Pleasure to meet you finally. Uh, my name is LeVar Greenhouse, um, Regional Director for External Affairs with AT&T. Basically what small cell is, we place these small cells, as you can see in those pictures. Uh, I think one is in New Orleans, uh, the one to the bottom right is in, I believe, Baton Rouge. And I sent two additional pictures, um, those, that's actually on the UL property. One looking down Saint Mary and the other one, um, right by the street sign is actually the small cell that's on UL's campus. And what, what we have here is what our ran engineers, they kinda identify locations where we have a, a network gap. Um, where you can't just readily place another tower, where our equipment on that tower is maximized, peaked out. We can't just place an, another antenna. So we place this equipment in areas where we have peak traffic, i.e. on UL campus. Uh, we have some in Baton Rouge by my home. We actually have one that we're planning on the campus of Burley High. Um, because what we see is when they have graduation, football games, you can't utilize your cell phone. So the intent of this is to offset that traffic from the cell tower, allow you to use your cell phone during those peak events, and then when you go home, um, the basis is that dormant. Um, so what we do is we match the exterior, the aesthetics of the environment. So if we have black streetlights, we place black streetlight poles. If we have wooden poles, we place wooden poles. Um, we also, we have agreements with LUS, which we just signed late March, April, uh, to co-locate on their facilities. We also have an agreement in place to co-locate on Entergy's, um, uh, infrastructure, cause what we don't want is to place one of these black poles and there's a street light that's owned by the city, there's a street light that's on our structure that's owned by Entergy that we can co-loc, co- co-locate on. So we don't wanna duplicate poles if there's a structure that we can locate on as well. Um, we can always attach the AT&T own poles, um, so we don't need an agreement, but Entergy, LUS, we have agreements to co-locate on their secondary poles. We cannot co-locate on their primary poles. Um, and the ordinance is basically, as y'all know, provides a framework to have that discussion with the city, um, the Public Works Director, um, to see if we can place. Also, what we don't want is to place these structures in a place, i.e. a subdivision and cause any conflict, any unrest. So we do work with the HOAs in addition to working with the, um, planning and zoning. Um, before, if the HOA is in agreement, if permitting, uh, planning a zone is in agreement, we also send a notice to all the adjacent property owners to let them know what is planned. That way they can call our ran engineers to have that discussion about what's going on while we placing it. Um, and just to bring further awareness of, of what we're doing in the area. There is no cost to the city. Um, so this is all on AT&T capital dollars and these range anywhere from a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and it's all to improve the network experience, your wireless experience, um, that we have within the city of Bruce, Art. We do have them in surrounding areas, Youngsville, New Iberia. New Iberia actually passed the first, adopted the first small cell ordinance in the city, I mean, the state, I apologize. Lafayette has one, and of course Baton Rouge, New Orleans, Alexandria, but Youngsville, New Iberia, Lafayette are the closest communities um, to New Iber, to Bruce, Art that has, um, an ordinance. So I can answer any question that you may have.
Is there an agreement with LUS and, uh, Energy also Slimco?
Uh, not Slimco yet, just because we hadn't entered the Slimco's footprint yet. Um, but if we enter their footprint, we will approach them and ask for an agreement.
Cause half of Bruce, Art is on Slimco, half is on Energy.
Okay. I'll make sure I bring it to my team. Yes, sir. Thank you.
LeVar, we appreciate you coming here tonight and giving us an education about this new technology as we, uh, as it's presented to the council to welcome into our community and strengthen the, the network here. Um, we, uh, we certainly wanna encourage that for our residents that we have the, you know, best capabilities we can for them. Um, is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Any further questions or, uh, comments for Mr. Greenhouse?
Question. District four?
Tina, can I clarify just something that Gerald said? He has put to the council a, uh, amended agreement. So the council's gonna have to accept it as such first and then vote to introduce. Is that correct, Gerald? Okay, so one. Thank you for that clarity, Gerald.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, LeVar.
Thank you.
That is the last item on our agenda. We appreciate you all being here tonight. Please drive carefully. Meeting adjourned.